Called order at Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for August the 6th, 2018, and I will be doing the invocation, and I recognize Ryan Mayberry for the pledge of allegiance. Let's stand.
All right, Brian.
Lord, we come to you, and we thank you today for the many blessings you've given to us. Thank you for the opportunity to come to Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting to be busy about your business, or that would move Alexander County forward, be with us and guide our thoughts and actions as we make decisions tonight. We pray for all our emergency services, protect and watch over them. Pray for our county citizens, our county employees. We just thank you for the good things that we have here in Alexander County. Pray that you keep us safe as we return to our homes after the meeting is over, protect and guide, and all these things we'll ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item of business is special recognition of County Ranger Dennis Wallers. You'll come forward, sir, and I believe Mr. Peel will be doing that.
For a Yankee, he's a pretty good guy.
And that's what, I've heard that before, too. But mine was more Midwestern than Yankee,
but Wisconsin's about as Midwest as Ohio, I guess. But to honor tonight, to present the key to Dennis, he's been a fire ranger here with our Forest Service since February of 2018 years, and says, find a job you love and you'll never work a day in your life, you know, and I believe that. I don't know if I believe it so much when it's 24/7, but sometimes you, you know, you live what you are, and he's certainly done that. It's been my honor to know him, but he has a bio here, and I'd like to just highlight a few things. Many memorable fires and events, it's allowed him to aid in fires, hurricanes, recovery, flooding throughout the state, across the East Coast, and actually all across the nation. So it's comforting to know that we have people here in our county that are called on for national duty when there are disasters. And that tells me that, you know, we're in good hands whenever we've got that quality of people who are working here for us. He's secured two fire trucks for the Vashti Fire Department, a military-style brush truck for the Hid Knight Department, 800 kilowatt generators, one for each department, saving our taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. Special recognition must also be included for those who have received hours of additional training with Dennis to serve on pre-arranged fire crews. These individuals enter the fire on the initial attack with the goal of speedy containment and a safer outcome. And, you know, as we see the world events that shape around us, and we see all those things that are happening out West, you know, a forest fire can be a devastating event. So we are very thankful for the eyes of protection that he has given our county for 18 years. And not only giving in that, but serving in a lot of other capacities, working the environmental days. I've watched the presentation down there that I've been in the fourth or fifth grade, I can't remember which goes to, but year after year, sets up and does that as well. But we are honored, going to miss you, but certainly glad and honored at the service that you have provided for us. And I would like to read this plaque. It says, Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby presents this key to the county upon Dennis Wallers in recommendation of his dedicated service, Alexander County Ranger for the North Carolina Forestry Service presented August 6th, 2018. We thank you and appreciate all that you've done.
I so much.
Now you've got to give a speech, and then we'll give an opportunity for your lovely wife to come up here and y'all get a picture for the paper as well. But the speech is on you.
Well, I'm not very good at giving speeches, and I'm just humbled by the presentation that you've given me, Dr. Peel, and to all the commissioners for your support throughout the years, and County Manager Rick French, Russell Green especially. Him and I had a working relationship probably second to none. I thank you all very much for the support you've given me, and without it, we would not be able to accomplish what we had these past 18 years. And I firmly believe I can look back with a lot of pride on what has been accomplished. I also have to mention the good Lord above for his grace and his guidance, especially. Without him, I would not be in this position, by no means. And second to that, I thank to my wife and my family for their support and for putting up with what they had to through these years. It's just unbelievable. And also, the key personnel throughout all the fire departments, the volunteers, they just don't get enough recognition. They really don't. And I couldn't accomplish near what I had without their backing as well. So one and all, it's been a pleasure. It's been a privilege to serve the citizens of this county. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Come on, get another picture there. Oh, that's all right. That's a good picture. I just messed it up.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your service, sir. At this time, I'd recognize any commissioner that has a report or something. I've got just a couple of things. One thing I'd like to mention, probably you've seen some posters up around the county and things about it. There'll be an Alexander County Draft Horse Pull at the Taylorsville Lion Club's Fairground. It'll be on Saturday, August the 18th, at 6:00. Think it'll be a good thing. For our county, if anybody's never seen one, it's a very interesting thing. Pretty large horses, and there'll be concessions and things. Bring blankets, lawn chairs, whatever. And that is on Saturday, August the 18th. So keep that in mind. And also, kind of a thing telling to what Mr. Wallers was talking about, volunteers. I was coming through the intersection 16 and Friendship Church Road, noticed this sign is on wheels but is attached to a telephone pole with a log chain, so nobody will take the whole thing. But it said, "Who will answer the call?" And I thought, red light caught me, so I stopped and looking at it, and it's from the Wittenburg Volunteer Fire Department. And, you know, that's really, that's where we're almost at. We're not quite there, but, you know, we need volunteers, and we need people to be involved in our fire departments, all the things that are going on. I guess you could say even in the politics of Alexander County. You know, we need some young people, some people who want to be involved, and that's what it takes. So, you know, we have a good bunch of citizens in Alexander County, and they're always quick to help. So that's something we just need to be thinking about is, you know, if we can get some people to attend some of these fire department meetings and be there to support them. And I'm sure Mr. Green could also aim in that, you know. But we just need to be thinking about that. We like for people to answer the call, and we punch in 911, and you want someone to come out. So we just need to be thinking about that. Anyone else have something?
I'd like to add to that just a little bit. We take for granted a lot of people, and those fire and rescue guys, the EMTs, I mean, all those services, you know, are supported, many of them by 100% volunteers. Yeah, you know, we pay certain people, and they have a job to do that, but we have a tremendous amount of folks who are putting themselves out there 24/7 availability for the rest of us whenever we have a need. And to encourage young people to be involved, it does my heart a lot of good when I see the young guys that are, you know, the junior firemen and, you know, the people that are wanting to give back and to aspire to fill those roles as they get older. But, you know, we don't need them until we need them. And then when we make that phone call, if it's me making that phone call, I want someone that's logical, someone that's trained, someone that's dedicated, and someone's going to get there and get there fast and take care of me. And that would be the same for all of us. But we rely a lot on volunteers and certainly want to do all that we can to encourage them to continue to do so. Great way to give back.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Peel. Anyone else have anything? All right. We'll move on to our next item is adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adopt. I think each one had ample time to look at it and look it over.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our next item of business, public comment. Has anyone signed up? Okay, everyone's signed up there. We'll move on to our Borealis Compounds Project update, and I'd recognize Jason Mendez, Operations Manager for Borealis Compounds. And we do appreciate you all being here tonight. Glad to have you coming into the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boy, that's a tough act to follow. Again, congratulations to Ranger Waller for his years of service in the Fire Department. And as your fellow commissioner spoke of, it is hard to find volunteers. And as a Yankee from Danora, Pennsylvania, this is the first time in 20 years that I've actually stood on this side of that bench. So I was involved in local politics for about 20 years before I became a proud North Carolinian.
Yay.
So, you know, I understand what you guys have to go through, resources and whatnot. So thank you to you for your time and effort in making Alexander County one of the best counties in North Carolina. So a little bit about our business endeavor. Hopefully, people have noticed that there's a lot of activity going on in the Alexander Railroad Industrial Park. We are Borealis Compounds. It is an international company. We are probably in the top five chemical companies in the world. And Borealis has made a major commitment to building a business segment in North America, and it is Borealis Compounds, North America. And we will be focusing primarily on the automotive industry, but also branching out into other areas as well. We have a plant in Rockport, New Jersey, and they wanted to have a freestanding, its own standing automotive plant somewhere in the South, close to some of the molders. So I'm sure you've met some of my predecessors who were involved in coming up and working with Mr. Eisenhower in selecting a site. And we've selected that site, and we have hit the ground running. I'd like to introduce my maintenance manager, Mr. Edward Turner. He was my first hire, and he and I sat there and looked at a dirt floor building for about three months until we finally started the project off the ground. And we are rolling, I can tell you that. Our equipment is in place, if not installed. We're installing electrical amenities now. We're finishing off the offices. But we're starting this week two very important events. One is mechanical completion, which is we will have inspectors coming in, myself included, walking through, making sure, testing each system, making sure each system works, preparing for startup. Our official Borealis startup date is October 20th, but we'll be running the machines before then working out the kinks. And the second one, and this is what you guys are waiting for, is tomorrow is the first of our, let's call it, job fairs. We have about 25 to 27 individuals that we are going to interview tomorrow. They will come on site, take mechanical aptitude tests, take a Hogan assessment test, be interviewed by our staff, and hopefully, a good fit for the plant itself. We are very, very interested in hiring as many local people as we possibly can. This is a shot in the arm for Alexander County and for North Carolina itself. And take it from me, I'm from a still town in Pennsylvania who in 1960, the, oh geez, the population was probably 14,000, and when I moved down here, it dropped down to two. So, you know, I know how important this is to stimulate business and growth. So we are moving forward. We'll be installing our own rel system with the help of Mr. Ben Zachary from Alexander Railroad. So unfortunately, we had set the dates, and, you know, God laughs at your best intentions because it's rained every day since. So we haven't been able to do too much. And again, I apologize if you see any red mud on me. It's like the surface of Mars out there. But we are working with a company called Gray out of Charlotte, and they're handling all of the construction and machine setups for us. And we will be getting, Borealis will be becoming more and more involved in taking over the project. I always say, and I tell my employees, and I tell our contractors, somewhere there are four or five Austrians looking through a telescope in Linz, Austria, and it comes down to a microscope in Taylorsville, North Carolina. Trust me, Taylorsville is on the map. It's probably the only city in the United States that is known in Linz, Austria. So every week, I have the opportunity to give updates to our executive team there, and they're very happy with the way things are going, and they're happy with the investment that we've made so far. On the QT, we've kind of outgrown ourselves already. So we have a Phase II expansion planned that may be expedited. But right now, our concentration is to, we have our management team in place, and we really, really need employees. You know, we're up against Paragon Films. They're riding around with trucks that say, "Hiring now." So we're in a friendly little competition with them to hire local people. So I would ask that anybody in the audience or any member of the board that knows of a young man that's coming out of trade school or coming out of high school, or don't, and really don't know what they want to do yet, those are the type of people we're looking for. We have, our safety program is second to none, and our training program is second to none. So we're looking at technical schools as well, recent graduates that would be willing to come in. And then we're looking at also a mentoring program, some sort, maybe teaming up with a vocational school or a, one of the county schools to, you know, have somebody come in, work a couple of days a week, and learn the electrical trade or mechanical trade. So very, very exciting stuff. We are working very, very diligently to generate business, particularly with the big three, which is hard. We had kind of a win this week when they rolled back the CAFE standards. I don't know if anybody saw that, but, you know, in 2025, trucks are supposed to get 52 miles per gallon, and lightweighting was the big move. And that's a turn to plastic. So they've eased up the rules there, and which will allow us to develop better products, safer products for every one of what we call the OEMs, which is the car companies. So right now, we've had three transfers down because we did need a little bit of help from our New Jersey plant. But it is, it's a very exciting time, and this is really a dream come true for me. I've been in the plastics business for 28 years. I started when I was 10. So Pennsylvania, the laws are a little lax there. So, but I've been in the same business the whole time. So we are, we will, Ed and I are dedicated, and David and his staff are dedicated to make this work. We are by no means a fly-by-night company that comes in and takes advantage of any tax credits. We are here, and we're here to stay. We're here to make money. We're here to establish ourselves in this company, in this county. What I also wanted to mention, which is very, very important, and was very, very important in some of the other companies I worked for, is you talked about volunteerism. Feel free, I will leave cards with Mr. French. Our employees, community service is very big. It's very big with me as operations manager. So anytime that you need volunteers for a town cleanup, a county cleanup, whatever the case may be, you need volunteers, come see me. Give me a call. We'll put up a list, and I can guarantee you that our men will sign up and step up to the task. So it's kind of a lot I'm trying to get out in one speech, but I just wanted to let you guys know that we are very, very excited to be here. We are happy to be here. We are happy for you guys to take the interest in and welcome us the way we have. So again, thank you to Mr. Eisenhower and his staff. Thank you to the board for, you know, allowing us to make plastic in your county. And hopefully, we'll be one of the larger, our goal is, my goal is, to be one of the largest employers here in Alexander County. And we'll get there in time. We'll get there. So, does anybody have any questions?
If what, not specific, but a wage range that you'd be looking at?
We've done a lot of research, and like I said, our HR department's coming into town next tomorrow, full force. And we've researched what the typical extruder machine operator makes countrywide, and what, because I had, I also worked for a compounding plant in Ashboro, so I kind of had an idea of what the pay range is, and we want to increase that to attract workers. So we'll be within the $15, $16 an hour range, you know, depending on skill set. Obviously, we're hiring a maintenance department, which will pay a little more. We're hiring electricians. We've hired a local electrician, three local lab technicians, and those jobs tend to pay a little bit more. They're more of a different skill set. But again, as we bring these individuals on, we do want to try to compete with other local companies. Just, you know, we want the best, but we want people that we can train, people that we can work with, people, young people that can come in and learn a vocation, learn this vocation, and start a family, and buy a home, and pay taxes, most importantly. So we feel that's a pretty good starting rate. If we find that that's not, then we'll make the necessary changes that we have to. But we want to just make sure that we're kind of ahead of the, ahead of the crowd a little bit in our recruitment. The best way to recruit is to pay a decent wage.
So and to be safe to say that you're looking for people that you can grow with your business?
Yes.
Their responsibility and will increase?
Yeah, exactly. Like I said, 28 years ago, I walked into a plastics company wet behind the ears. My best friend worked there, said, "Hey, you know, we're hiring. Why don't you come down?" And so I started at the bottom, sweeping floors, and worked my way up to plant manager. And I would really, really like to see some young individuals come in and be able to shepherd them the way that I was mentored over those 28 years to get to where I was. Because it is a growing field. It's a very interesting field. It's like no other. It's, there's an art and a science to it. So.
I'll just say that, you know, when Alexander County Railroad came to us with the idea, and, you know, we thought it was a great idea. And we're really looking for someone like your company to move in that traditionally has not, you know, been an employer in Alexander County. So to have a, you know, mix of different types of companies that are here, I think is very good.
Absolutely.
Very good thing. So we appreciate you here.
Yeah. And before I forget, that reminded me of one thing. Again, health, safety, and environment are our number one cause and concern. We have a zero, we actually make little tiny plastic pellets that we send off to molders, and they make fenders and dashboards and whatnot. We do have a zero pellet policy, where if you spill a pellet, you pick it up. Most, what you'll notice when you hopefully come out and visit the site is mostly everything is paved. Our rel spur will be paved, our parking lots, everything is paved so that it's easy to clean up and doesn't get into the environment or get into the water treatment center. So, and also, like I said, and our safety program, to make sure that everyone who comes to work leaves in the same condition that they got there and home safely. So two things we take very, very seriously, above everything else, and then quality, and then business after that.
And I believe the pellets that you make are about the size of a BB, right? Or a little larger, maybe?
Yeah, tad, tad bigger. So they are kind of hard to kind of keep in place.
Right.
But we found with these tried and true solutions, paving, and we have vacuum stations located throughout the plant and throughout the outside, that is it. Before you leave work that day, there will be zero pellets on the floor, zero contamination. So that's what our aim is. Because it does us no good to come in and junk up your town and junk up your county and pocket the money.
Right.
Simple as that. That's not a partnership. That's...
So you're making the pellets there, correct?
Yes.
Or they're bringing pellets in, you're treating them, and then?
Yeah, actually, they will bring base resins in, clear resins, and we add strengtheners and additives to them, to the specifications of Ford, GM. You should see a Ford specification. My goodness, it's about that thick.
Really? Wow.
Good car.
Yeah. So, you know, one of my favorite tests is the negative, you know, we freeze the plastic to negative 40 degrees and test it to make sure that it doesn't explode on impact. So there's a lot of thought that goes into it from the car companies, and we have engineer, we will have engineers on site that will be developing new products and improved products as well. So it will be a technology center. This will be, what we're hoping for is Taylors will be, Taylorsville will be the center of Borealis' automotive division. And we will build additional plants as we go on. But we want to grow this one as far out as we can.
Great.
Glad to see you all in the county, and I'm glad to hear that the hiring is starting and...
Yes. Yeah, we're a little bit behind schedule, so I didn't want, so I'm glad you guys invited me because I didn't want anybody to get nervous and saying, "Well, nobody's getting hired." We're just not at that part yet where we need employees. But we need to train them in New Jersey, train them here. So we're going to start that onboarding process this week.
Glad to have you all in our county, and hope we're good neighbors both ways. So we're looking forward to everything going. And you mentioned automotive. There's a lot of auto guys in this county, so if we're known for automotive, that'll be a good thing.
Yeah. And again, like I said, you know, Borealis is a large global company, and usually the investment is the other way around. American companies try to establish themselves in Europe, and they're a European company that realized that, you know, America needs a little bit of a shot in the arm. And the market's there. So they are dedicating money, time, and resources to make this a success, and they're dedicated to it. So I invite, we will have a ribbon cutting ceremony because I'll have another chance to give a speech. I never pass up a chance to give a speech. That's the old politician in me. You guys know how that goes. But I invite any one of you to stop by the site at any time. We have a trailer marked Borealis. We have a trailer marked Borealis. It's Ed and I sitting there arguing with each other all day. And we're kind of waiting to get started. So I'll be more than happy to give you a tour, but we will be having an open house closer to startup because we are doing some electrical work and still some framework and whatnot.
I'll be looking forward to that, I'll try to come down and take a tour, so.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And anytime anybody has any questions, David knows where to find me. We're working hard and we, like I said, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be partners. But anybody that needs a job, come see me. I can always guarantee you, you're going to get hired. You know, it sounds strange in this day and age, but, you know, if anybody knows of anybody, all you have to do is make the call and we'll get to set the interviews up and whatever we need to do. So I'll leave, I brought a stack of cards with me that I'll leave with Mr. French. You guys can take them a little bit later.
Appreciate you.
So much for your time and thank you for your cooperation. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate you taking time to come answer questions and let us know what's going on. Appreciate the updates and thank you for what you're doing.
I'm from Greensboro, so it's like I might as well live in Virginia.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank y'all for coming to our county.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of business is recognize Mr. Rick French for the resolution by governing body of applicant Alexander County Sewer Line Extension and Pump Station Upgrade Project. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last month, we adopted a resolution for the, accepting North Carolina Clean Water Revolving Loan and Grant Funds for Water. And tonight, we're asking you to adopt a resolution for the sewer project. Its total amount is five million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. It's for construction of replacement pump stations, force mains, two replacement pump stations, all in the Bethlehem area with force mains and new gravity sewer. And the resolution accepts the state bond loan offer. And so tonight, we're asking you to adopt this resolution. In talking with the engineer, it's anticipated that construction will start next summer on this project.
Thank you, Mr. French. This time I entertain a motion in a second, and then after the second, if there's discussion, we can discuss it. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution for the Alexander County Sewer Line Extension and Pump Station Upgrade Project.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussions? This is something that we've talked about, you know, for a little while, and it's getting some sewer into the county and getting some things started in that area. And, you know, hopefully it can move on further and with the grants, a pretty good deal. If there's another questions, I'd entertain a vote of approval by raising the right hand. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, gentlemen.
Your other right hand.
And moving on to our next item of business, recognize Mr. Rick French again for the Budget Ordinance Amendments, number four through six, Capital Budget Ordinance, P3, Sewer Line Extension and Pump Station Upgrade Project also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number Four is the budget for Western Piedmont Council of Government Contract to provide technical planning assistance for the Bethlehem Community Plan. Total contract amount is twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. But the amount will be paid for, for the 2018, 2019 budget year is twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Budget Amendment Number Five is the budget for fiscal year 2019 portion of the fifty thousand, twenty-three dollars engineering contract for preliminary feasibility analysis for a wastewater treatment facility. A small portion of the contract fees were paid from last fiscal year for services performed by June 30th, 2018. Budget Amendment Number Six is the budget for the transfer of sales tax money from the general fund directly to the sewer project fund instead of passing it through the Bethlehem Sewer Fund first. When fiscal year 2019 budget was adopted, it was not known when the sewer project loan would be approved, and the sewer project budget ordinance had to wait for loan approval. The loan fee of one hundred and three thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars will be paid from the new sales tax that can be used for economic development, public education and community college. And then we have a capital project budget ordinance totaling five million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. This is for the sewer project that we just discussed with revenues and expenses. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, on the budget amendments or the project ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. French. Any questions? Okay, sounds like everybody's understanding. I'd entertain a motion of approval in a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented, budget amendment four, five and six.
Don't forget P.
Oh, I'm sorry, and ordinance number P3.
All right, thank you, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions? There being none, I'd entertain a vote of approval by raising the right hand, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. French. Moving on to item number five, I'd recognize John Pillington, Director of Planning and Development, for the agreement between the Western Piedmont Council of Governments and Alexander County for the provision of technical planning assistant Bethlehem Community Plan for September 1, 2018 through September 30, 2019. Thank you, Mr. Pill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the boards. You have in front of you a contract for technical planning assistance to, for the Western Piedmont Council of Governments to develop a Bethlehem, I typically call them a small area plan. I think the COG is now calling them a community plan, but they're interchangeable. This would be a plan that looks at development, future growth in the Bethlehem community. Initially, when I was thinking about a project in the upcoming budget year, I wanted to look at updating the actual county's comprehensive plan because it will be, well, it is currently ten years old. But with the proposed widening of Highway 127 in the Bethlehem area, I felt like a small area plan would be better suited to help address the potential growth that could occur with the widening project. The item number four in the agenda was a budget amendment approval for this project. The contract runs from September 1 to September, September 1 of 2018 to September 30 of 2019. It will only be a twelve-month project that is billed. There's just an extra month billed in there in case we need to finalize some things. You'll notice in attachment A of the contract, which is the work program, on the second page, it notes a few things that we as a local government would need to provide. One, one of the most important things would be the commission appointing a steering committee to serve in helping develop the plan. And then also, I'll work on trying to get a meeting location area. Keep it in the Bethlehem community since a majority of the stakeholders would be from that area. So if you have any questions of me, this is kind of a standard COG contract. As far as a project goes, I really just feel like with everything that's going to happen over the next few years, that this will be a good plan. I have spoken with the planning director for the COG, Ashley Adams, or excuse me, Allison Adams, and Johnny Ware, who's the senior planner for Natural Resources. One of the things I was really pushing for in this plan is it to be a more, there be more, for lack of a better word, pictures showing what we would like to happen instead of so much just verbiage and policies and goals, actually putting that on paper and showing pictures of what potentially people in the Bethlehem community would like to see and how they would like to see their community develop. So I think it'll be a good plan, a well-written plan, and one that I think the people in that community and the entire county actually would be proud of.
Yeah, I think, you know, probably a lot of people in the county's probably got some questions, but no other area of the county is going to be getting a four-lane road coming in in the next couple of years. So, and a lot of things are happening there. So I prefer, and I think the rest of the commissioners also, to be kind of ahead of the curve instead of trying to, you know, catch back up after things have happened. So, and this is a way we can kind of control, you say it looks at planning, development, the whole thing. And the COG, actually, that's what we call our acronyms. That's the Western Piedmont Council of Governments there in Hickory. So we've worked a lot with them there. They understand what we need and we have a good working relationship. And I appreciate your help in putting this together too, so.
Well, you know, I am the director of planning and I always jokingly say, a lot of times, I do more reacting than I do planning. Especially when I work for the council of governments, I felt like working in the small towns that I did, it was more reacting and not actually getting to do planning. So I really felt like, you know, with the project being five years, five to seven years down the road, getting this in place, we actually get to do some planning, put something on paper. With the contract actually starting in September, and I will mention too, possibly at your next commissioners' meeting, it's appointing a committee. They recommend a committee of about nine to serve on the steering committee. And I would plan on notifying them and then hopefully our first meetings and then any, we'll meet monthly. More than likely, if we have to meet twice a month, we certainly could do that. But would meet at the end of every month while working on this project.
Who is "we"?
Myself, planning staff from the county, and then the planners with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments.
Just curiously, and I, great that we're doing it, so don't take what I'm about to say or ask wrong. Is this beyond the scope of what we can do locally in terms of planning and evaluating and looking and determining and whatever else will be done there?
You mean in-house?
Yes, in-house.
I think there are certain things that we can do. One of the things that, that they have available to them is just a bigger pool of expertise to pull from. They're, you know, I, you know, I don't know, because Dr. Bill, I've not known you as long as everybody else, but I worked for the COG for fourteen years, so having worked in that, you know, I would think the same thing. But just having their ability and their knowledge and their expertise in doing this helps. They have the ability with some of their computer programming, it's like I said, to provide the visual framework of a plan that I just don't, in our department, we don't, we don't have the capability of doing that. And just their, their track record locally, they've always put together really good plans and it's.
I would, I would tend to agree with you, but I've sat here long enough. It would probably take his department twice as much money in labor to produce that than what they're going to be able to do it for.
And then as, as it moves forward, now, so there's a couple of public meetings there, are there other residents or opportunities for people to be part of that process?
Yes, there will be, and I'm glad you asked because even trying to cover it all. Typically, there's at least two public input meetings that will be held in the Bethlehem community for people to come in, give their ideas, opinions about things, almost like they did with the, well, essentially like they did with the 127 widening project when they held it at the Methodist Church there on 127. We will, we will have those meetings so people can come in and give input. That's really the driving force behind how we put the plans together. It's not, not really arbitrarily done just through the planners' eyes.
Yeah, I've seen those two meetings, but I mean, from an ongoing presence, or is there local input? Or just in those two?
Well, anybody, I mean.
Public hearings.
We would certainly welcome anybody to provide any commentary during the entire process. If somebody wanted to attend a steering committee meeting that wasn't on the actual steering committee, they would be more than welcome to do that.
This may, the steering committee itself will be made up of whom?
Well.
Because I think that, that, and I may be.
That's part of my question too.
I may be reading into this wrong, but I would assume the steering committee will be community members.
Yes, it would be Bethlehem community members.
And those, hopefully, community members that have a lot of communication with a lot of residents in the Bethlehem area and not, you know, which would allow for community input.
Right, I don't, I, I kind of detest planning buzzwords, but they like to use the word stakeholder. So you're looking at residents, property owners, business owners, you know, people that have a direct impact in the Bethlehem community would be on the steering committee. I mean, you know, my thought would be that at least maybe one commissioner would serve either in a ex officio capacity or even as a member of the steering committee, and then a planning board member from the Bethlehem community could also serve. So you both could be liaisons to your actual boards as to what's going on with the process as well.
So that would be the nine that you were talking about we have to set up.
Correct, yes. And then anyone else that you feel like would be a good addition to the committee. And if it's more than nine, if it's ten, if it's twelve, that's fine. I think, you know, you kind of want to keep it small enough so that you can get your work done in a, you know, in a two to two and a half hour period every time you meet.
It's a lot, I mean, providing a lot of stuff, money-wise.
And truthfully, Dr. Bill, that's, that's honestly a lot of the stuff that we just can't. I would be going to them anyway to get this information and.
Yeah, my concern is not so much that it's twenty-five thousand dollars. That's, when you look at what you're getting, that's appears to be quite a bargain. My concern is just making sure that we have that ongoing presence of local residents who are highly vested there and will be for a long, long time. And I want to make sure that, you know, that their interests are vetted thoroughly.
Right, understand, totally understand. We certainly will, you know, that will be a lot of the process. I think now, especially with social media the way it is, I mean, it'll be, you know, we can make the information available very easily now for people to provide, even if they can't attend meetings or make a phone call, but can provide, you know, emails, comments on Facebook, Twitter, anything of that nature to provide feedback for the plan.
Thank you.
I guess one of my concerns, and the main concern I have, is that we get the plan done and like most plans, they're thrown up on the shelf and nothing happens to them. What I would like to make sure that we do is two things, three things really. And I'm sure this steering committee and this plan will come out with a ranking of what's the most important things to do. What I would like to add to that is, you know, if, if it is a capital project like sidewalks, you know, installing some sidewalks around the shopping area or something, what's that going to cost? Where can we go? I know there's some state monies out there for doing sidewalks in areas like that. What grants are available? How much it's going to cost? You know, just to estimate. And then the third thing is whoever this group is would kind of like to keep them together. After it's done, to make sure that these things are, you know, driven and we don't forget about them, get busy with other things and, you know, that you've got somebody. And, you know, that you've got somebody there that's still trying to take care of those things and, and adding new things to the plan as it, as it evolves.
And, and I a hundred percent agree with you. One of the things, especially with this plan and, and really any plan from now on, is that, you know, from a, from a planning standpoint and a, and a land use standpoint, if, if the committee recommends certain land use patterns, growth areas, and of course, the, the commission would ultimately approve the, the plan that, you know, within, within the next month or two, given the, you know, having to advertise to get everything published, that we go ahead and get those things put in place and get them, get them drafted and, and have them done. I, I, I do agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying in that, you know, take a more, a more aggressive approach with, with getting the, you know, making the rubber meet the road.
Right. I mean, one of the, I guess the easier things to do is zoning, you know, that's not that costly, so.
Right, correct, yeah. And, and like I said, there are other things that, yeah, we'd have to put together, you know, I, I hate to say another plan, but basically another sort of packet of information to, you know, for costs and things like that. But that's certainly something that we have available to be able to do.
It'd help us make decisions.
Right, understand.
So the committee will be making suggestions on potential zoning recommendations too?
Yes, correct, correct. Just like a comprehensive plan, this is basically a comprehensive plan for one part of your county. And given, you know, Alexander County's geography and, and, and the demographics of it, I mean, your, your populace is really in the Bethlehem area. And, and what's going to happen there, like you said, there's no other four-lane road, new four-lane road planned in the county. And so it will be a significant impact to that area. And, and how development occurs around that area will, will be very important. And part of that will be making recommendations for land use. And then, of course, there, there are recommendations that could be adopted. And, but, you know, the, the actual changes have to be done through zoning. They, they still essentially exist as policy recommendations.
So it ultimately come back like anything else to us for? That way we get to look at it for something that we want to tweak or change?
Correct, yes.
You know, and there's going to be some time where we are able to do this, so.
Right. And, and the state, just to, not, not to drag it out. But the state does require that when we make changes to the zoning map with rezonings, that we base that on a plan that's been adopted by the, by the elected officials. So this, anything that occurs in Bethlehem that would require rezoning, you've got, you'll have this, this document in place to base those decisions on, one way or the other.
The, the last big zoning change was what, 2000? So 18 years ago, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
There's not been anything significantly done.
Right. So there's, there's been a lot of changes in that time along with this four-lane road. There's the big subdivision coming in, the sewer. There's, there's going to be a lot of changes. We just, we need to get ahead of the, you know, like you said.
The sewer project as well is, is a prime example of what, how, how that does change things for, for the community.
And for zoning, yeah.
Yes, and for zoning.
All right. Any other questions? So we need to adopt this, Mr. French? Okay, there's no other questions right now. I'd entertain a motion in a second to adopt agreement between the Western Piedmont Council of Governments and Alexander County for the provision of technical planning assistance Bethlehem Community Plan for September one, 2018 to September thirty, 2019.
I move to approve.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion?
What's the guy in the corner?
Yeah, he's on the end here. All right, no questions. I'd entertain a vote of approval by raising the right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pillkin. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our next item of business. Pages are stuck together here. Item number six, recognize our county manager, Mr. Rick French again for county sales tax revenue for 2017, 2018 budget year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular sales tax through July 2018 is four million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, which represents almost 91% of the budget collected, which is also 91.67% of the budget year expired. We have one more month of sales tax, regular sales tax. This is running about 3.8% more than last year, same time last year. New sales tax money, one million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, which is, represents about 92, almost 93% of the budget collected. And for the same time period, 91.67 or 91.7. Total budget for new sales taxes, one million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, which is running a little over 7% ahead.
All right.
Be glad to try to answer any questions or.
Ticking up, that's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
Not quite as much as I like to see, but that, you know, we're making some movement there. Any other comments from anyone? Okay. Moving on to item number seven, I recognize Mr. Rick French again for county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to mention that tomorrow, we're opening RFQs, requests for qualifications for engineering firms for the Community Development Block Grant for Stony Point Elementary School wastewater project. They'll be opened at two o'clock at the county administration building. And that's a part of the process. And then we'll have a recommendation for our September meeting. For, that'll be for the engineering firm for that project.
Okay. All right. That sounds like we've got things kind of going on on both ends of the county. We've been hearing about Bethlehem, now we've got something in Stony Point. So, you know, we're trying to make sure we work in all areas that we can be. But like I say, for Bethlehem, things are really rolling along up there. And that's going to help the whole county when that does, you know, all happen. So thank you for that report, Mr. French. Any other commissioner have a comment? All right, everybody's quiet, that's good. Moving on to our next item, adoption of the consent agenda. I'm sure everyone's had the opportunity to look at that. I'd entertain a motion in a second to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion in a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will go into adjournment to our closed session reference to NCGS 143318 dot 11 at four, five and six for economic development contractual and personnel agreements. We will reconvene, but only for the purpose of adjournment. Do I have a motion in a second to go into a closed session?
So move.
Okay, a motion?
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, can stand. Thank you.